I'd like to call the order, the Monday, June 25th meeting of the Select Board. It is seven o'clock. We're very happy to have everyone joining us. We have on our agenda tonight announcements and this review of the agenda. We then have a public comment period followed by the Town Manager's Report. On the Town Manager's Report, we will talk about our schedule perhaps. We will review the Matrix Audit Recommendations for the IT Department. We will review and potentially approve draft zoning bylaw relating to recreational marijuana. We will in all likelihood call for and open the warrant for the 2018 Fall Town Meeting, as well as for the Special Town Meeting on October 1st, 2018. We will have a discussion and then potentially a decision, hopefully a decision, on the Town Manager's request to assist the town of Dunstable through a transitional period. And then we will make or affirm any remaining annual appointments of the Select Board and the Town Manager. We have then some time for other business. We have all of our ongoing issues, A through S, to be covered if there are important parts. We have liaison reports, one set of minutes to approve. And then we will be entering into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, Paragraph A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel with no intent to return to regular session. So, first thing is announcements.
I have an announcement, Allison, if I may. As you know, we had been in a lawsuit brought by some fire fighters against the town of Groton. I have a press statement regarding the resolution of the lawsuit brought by Clarence Jefferson, Benjamin Mealy, Stephen Turbeau, and James Horan against the town of Groton. The parties to the lawsuit are pleased to announce that they have reached an agreement to resolve their differences prior to trial at no cost to the taxpayers of Groton. All involved believe that this resolution best serves the needs of the plaintiffs and the town of Groton. We shall all move forward and are happy that this matter is behind us, and we shall make no further comment. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Very good. Any other announcements this evening? All right, not seeing any, we can move on to the public comment period. Is there anyone here who would like to speak?
Ms. Allen, Main Street. I have not seen anything in social media about the Fourth of July fireworks. Are there going to be any in Groton?
I have an announcement to make on the fireworks for the Fourth of July. I meant to do that earlier, thank you, Ms. Allen. July 9th will be the fireworks here in Groton, Monday, July 9th.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to respectfully request that tonight, for instance, you have a couple of items on the agenda that I would love to have known more about prior to this meeting. And I understand the selectmen get in a packet, a little bit more detailed set of information than what's available in the agenda here. They might, for instance, have a draft of the marijuana zoning, the proposed zoning regulations for marijuana. And, for instance, residents who were interested in weighing in on that might be more educated to come to a meeting like this, having read what was proposed and then listening to the discussion than to hear the discussion. And so I respectfully request that supplemental information be distributed as appropriate prior to selectmen's meetings, perhaps the entire packet or a subset of the packet that's relevant to educating voters. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? The microphone, make it play back across.
I would just like to add to Mark's comment. I had a call from Don Black today, and he said activities will start around six o'clock at the Town Field, and the Fire Department, I believe, will be there with hamburgers and hot dogs and drinks and so forth.
Very good, thank you. Any other public comments? All righty. Town Manager.
I would like to move item number seven up to the top, and that's appointments of the Select Board and the Town Manager. I don't know if the board is aware that last month we received a notice that Tim Cooper, who has been with us for seven years, at least.
I'm not going to argue with you.
Okay. Tim Cooper's been with us for seven years, resigned to take a position on the Police Department for the city of Lowell, and it created a vacancy within the department. And given the fact that we also approved a new position at Town Meeting for a resource officer adding to the department, we didn't, ordinarily we would go through a promotion of a reserve officer, put him in the academy, and then move them up through the ranks when we had time to do that. Because we didn't have time, Deputy Chief and I got together and we decided that the best thing to do was to try to recruit an officer who's in another town, already a certified officer, can hit the ground running. And very rarely do we have an opportunity to bring somebody on board that has grown up in this community, who we wanted to hire seven years ago, but he decided to go someplace else, but we won't talk about that now. But now we had the opportunity to get him back here as a certified police officer. So I'm very, very pleased to bring forward to you tonight an appointment of Andrew Davis. And funny story, John Geiger was in my office, and Andrew came by to meet me, and I said, "Oh, John, you can meet Andrew Davis." And John looked at me kind of strange, and I couldn't understand why. He's like, "I know Andrew Davis, he's my neighbor." I said, "No, no, this is a different Andrew Davis." So Andrew did grow up locally here, and he did attend the Groton-Dunstable schools. He lives in Shirley with his wife Lindsay and their son Jacob. And my understanding, if it's okay with you to announce, is it already pronounced? Okay, they're expecting their second child in the fall. I'd like to always announce that kind of stuff. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Westfield State University. He graduated from the Lowell Police Academy in 2010 and has been a full-time police officer since 2011, working for both the Boston University Police and the Lincoln Police Department. He was appointed as Community Safety Officer in Lincoln a year ago, and he does understand what is needed to serve a community like Groton. And he's looking to come back and serve this community that he knows very, very well. He's been very involved in the community while in Lincoln and was sure that he would be a great fit for the Police Department here in Groton. And Jimmy Cullen could not recommend him more highly. As a matter of fact, Andrew was up for a job in another department. And the reason I'm bringing this to you tonight is we wanted to make sure that Andrew didn't go to that other department. And we kind of told him, "Come here tonight, we're going to appoint you, and tell that other department you're not coming," and he did that for us. So I'm very, very excited to introduce you tonight to Andrew Davis. He's here, I've made that appointment effective immediately, and I'd ask the Board of Selectmen to ratify that appointment this evening. Deputies, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yep, if you don't mind.
Please do, can we get the microphone for the deputy?
I'm actually really excited to do this, because this will probably be the only appointment that I will be directly involved in my tenure as leading the department. So this is really good, and I'm proud to bring Andrew Davis to your attention. I've always advised Chief Palmer that we have to hire hard to manage easier, and this appointment is no different than all the rest that we've made over the years. I'm proud to have him join our department. He slipped through our fingers once before, and we have corrected that issue. So I would request the Board to give him your support and welcome him to our community, or back to our community.
Very good. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we appoint Andrew Davis.
Ratify the appointment.
Ratify.
Ratify the appointment of Andrew Davis to the Groton Police Department, which is where he's belonged for the last seven years.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions?
Yep.
Okay.
So how did this recruitment process work? Where did we advertise the position? How long was it advertised?
I can answer that question. We advertised it for a month. We put it on right after, as soon as we received Tim Cooper's resignation, we advertised the job. We put it in, we sent it out to the local departments, we put it in the local newspaper, we posted it on our website. We received, correct me if I'm wrong, 25 applicants?
Yeah.
We received 25 applicants for the job, and Andrew was absolutely the top choice of the department, and that's why he's here tonight.
The reason I asked is typically the cream rises to the top, so we're happy that that occurred and that you have not slipped through our grip after all these years. So thank you for answering that question.
Yep, I'm glad you asked it, I should have made that as part of my opening remarks.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of ratifying this appointment? Say aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. We do have a badge?
As is tradition, we'd like to give him his very first badge here.
Thanks, Andrew, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask our IT Director, Mike Chason.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Madam Chairwoman, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I forgot Barry wasn't here, forgive me.
We look kind of alike.
I'm old and senile, forgive me.
No comment.
Allison, I would ask Mike Chason to come up to the table tonight. If you go to page, if you go to page five of your packet, you have the audit recommendation from the Matrix Audit. Mike is here to update you and talk to you about it and answer any questions that you have, so I'll stop talking and turn it over to Mike.
Hey, everyone, so we basically have two recommendations from them. One was to maintain our current staffing level, and the second was to formalize a prioritized list. I completely support their recommendation to maintain the current staffing. I don't think we're in need of adding or subtracting in that area. I think we're pretty well comfortably staffed here. And the recommendation of the prioritized list, I did make a response on that note that I gave you, just letting you know that we usually do this in our goal-setting process with the Town Manager, but our stuff are more kind of project-oriented instead of entire goal, like strategic-oriented for the town to be as a direction it'd be going to. So I did say that was a good recommendation for me and Mark to work on, and it's definitely something we're going to move forward with, so. Those are my quick responses to the audit.
Do you folks have questions on this?
I have some comments. I don't know if that fits in with the prioritized list. But just some aspects of the website that I'd like to talk about. Is that appropriate at this point? So one is, we have this very outdated photo on the link to the video recordings of our meetings.
Yep.
It shows three selectmen, none of whom are on the board anymore.
Select Board members.
Select Board members, well, they were all selectmen.
Correct.
I still am.
You're not shown, you're still here, but the three people who are shown.
I think the picture has Peter, Jack, and Stuart in it, right? Stuart, right.
So can we replace that?
Certainly, yeah.
Okay. I think the fact that it is outdated tends to have made people dismiss and not realize that that's the place to click to get to see the recordings, so. Also, I went looking today for the name and phone number of Town Hall employees, and I couldn't find them anyplace. And I'm pretty sure I remember seeing them in the past. So I wonder, is there a philosophy about not putting names of employees on?
For the most part, we have most names, maybe some. Typically, that sort of stuff, as people change over department, they let us know. We don't actively go kind of ask, like, "Who's your part-time inspectors for these things or whatnot?" So we kind of rely on department heads to let us know of those updates, and then we'll process them. But we can definitely remind people to go through, make sure the departments are up to date.
Well, so, I mean, at one point, they were on the page for the land use department, and now they're not, so it must have gotten taken off.
A while back, we, you know, do you know what employee you're talking about is not there? Was it Lucky Inspector?
Well, I remember seeing both Takashi and Nick someplace, and I couldn't find them anyplace.
Nick's probably on the Conservation Commission, is not. I'll have to look that up, I'm not familiar with their, their department number should definitely be available in there.
Can I just, under Town and under Town Departments, there's a whole list by alphabetical order of all departments and their phone numbers.
Yes, and is.
If I click on Planning, for instance.
Is Conservation.
Move me to the Planning page, and it gives the phone number, the fax number.
Does it have his name?
List of members of the Planning Board, yep. List of members of the Planning Board, list Takashi's name, and phone number.
Conservation, everybody's there.
Okay, so I'm always doing this. I spent a lot of time trying to do it different ways. Is Conservation listed on that list?
Yep.
Okay. So on the.
I don't see any names, though.
But no names, right.
Scroll down.
Well, the, the.
The committee members.
The committee members are there.
Right, yeah. The committee members, but not the employees. And on the list of elected and appointed officials, there's no names, or some of them maybe have names, for the most part they don't. There's no, I guess what I'm getting at, there isn't a clear directory of like names of people. If you know the name and you want to find their phone number, but you didn't necessarily know their title, or I would just think that a directory of some sort might be useful.
Gotcha, yeah, we can definitely, you know, work together to get this the way you want, Becky.
I would think that listing the names, though, becomes problematic when there is turnover. It's just another thing to keep updated, is that.
Yes, I agree. And one of the things I noticed was on the All Boards and Committees page, it talks about vacancies as of April 2017.
So that'll get updated, now that we're through the appointment process, we'll be able to.
But this is a whole year ago, it said vacancies as of April 2017.
That's probably a typo, I think we updated that in 2010.
That's probably a typo, we just updated that before the Spring Town Meeting, so.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I also have, I think I talked with you once before, to search through the minutes of our meetings is painstaking if you don't know which meeting you're looking for. And if there was a way to assemble all of the agendas in one file or folder, I'm not sure what to call it, so you open once and you can quickly go through all of the agendas and figure out which meeting was the discussion of the such-and-such that I'm looking for.
Right.
Then I could open the minutes of that meeting.
That's been an ongoing thing. We've had some recent resident input on some things about that.
I read that, yes.
If you actually go to the page right now, if you, there's, if you go to the Meeting Center, it's Town Meeting Center, there's a search bar right at the top that gives you the opportunity to search through all agendas, because those are stored as text in our databases. And then there's a follow-up option to search meeting minutes as well now. So you can go on there and search marijuana.
So where is that?
If you go to the Town webpage, there's a Town button, and then Meeting Center. And further, if you do the search button, there'll be a little list right at the top that says to search meetings and agendas, click this link.
Okay, so I found something that said agendas and minutes. I clicked it, and I got it something that said Agenda Test Project.
That might have been an old link from when we were first scrolling that out.
It was just this afternoon.
Yeah, so that's a link we'll have to make sure we take.
So Meeting Center?
Yep. Mark, can you pull that up on the.
So, but there's no, like directly from the Select Board page.
Not from the Select Board page, but if you go to townofgroton.org.
Is this part of the audit recommendations, this discussion?
Well, that's what I said, maybe this isn't appropriate.
I'm fine answering questions while I'm up here, I don't mind. She wants to.
I'm fine sticking to the agenda.
Well, so I guess to summarize, I have heard complaints from Town residents that came to me. I know there was discussion on the listserv, and it resonated with me because it was an issue that I have also had difficulty with and talked with you about it at one point a long time ago, so.
So we're definitely at a point right now where we are, you know, we have certain features that are new with features that are old. And it's obviously a little bit of a hangover. We talked about this when we were implementing the new meeting notification system.
Right.
And so in the meantime, it's definitely, you know, you've got to click a second link to get here. But here's what we'll basically bring you, where you can search your meeting minutes, meeting agendas, and search for meeting titles in case you just want to find all Select Board meetings.
Okay.
And so on here, you can search meeting minutes, and if you search for something, say marijuana, it's going to pull up every meeting minute that we've had so far that has those on it.
Okay.
So, Mark, I'll click in the meeting minutes here, Mark.
That's like a type.
So I'll showcase where you can view the agenda right there or view the minutes that we have uploaded on there.
Okay, I had not.
So, and like I said, to help make it easier, so people don't do their, if you just do the search on the Town webpage, there's a little byline right there saying if you're searching for minutes or agendas, please use this link to search deeper into those.
Great, okay. Any other questions?
I see, all links here. John, do you have a question, though?
Oh, just quickly, I've already started some dialogue with Mark around Section 6.3 relative to looking down the road and thinking about how we get everything done with the resources that we have and so forth and so on, which I'll continue to have with Mark.
We meet Thursday morning, Monday.
Yep.
Yep, Michael will be with us Thursday morning.
So.
Great.
This, this you can get.
Yes, Ms. Allen.
Yes, I have signed up for notifications of the meetings. It's been great, I mean, it's been very great. Also, the fact that one of the meetings also posted the minutes. So, because I have.
So you're happy?
I'm very happy.
I'd like to do it.
I just wanted to make sure he knows that.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you for coming in.
Mike, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
Item number three, Allison, I want to apologize to the Board for an error I made at last week's meeting. I gave you a draft warrant to reflect the Board's position on a partial ban of recreational marijuana. Town Council had sent me the draft along with a note that he wanted to discuss the article in more detail, the section specifically dealing with the retail sale of marijuana. The Board obviously caught that error during your review. I went back to Town Council. If you go to page six in your packet, you will see the new draft article for it. And if you look at the second page, you will see that that retail section was cleaned up and where we are at in terms of the maximum number of licensed marijuana establishments. The Town shall be consistent with the following. It basically says three facilities, and it's marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana research facility. So those are the updates. And if you go back to the Schedule of Use Regulations, you'll see that under those areas of cultivation, testing, and research, you'll see that they are allowed in the GB and I zones by Planning Board special permit. I believe that is the article that the Board had requested. What I'm going to ask the Board tonight is to authorize me to submit this article to the Planning Board so that they can start their process. And that's what I am asking you to do tonight, and I think this does exactly what the Board asked for.
Okay, questions, John?
Some of you may have already seen this, but we got news today that the Attorney General has decided that moratoriums can be projected all the way to the end of 2019. So that's something for all of us to noodle on.
Yep. I don't think that applies to us.
It does.
Because we already have zoning in place.
You would have to amend the bylaw to extend it, that's what you would have to do. It does give you that option.
We'd amend the moratorium bylaw, right?
Correct.
My understanding is.
And the bylaw itself, you'd have to amend two bylaws to extend the moratorium. I sent that out as information because I thought it was interesting.
Right, but my understanding is that as soon as the Attorney General approves the zoning, which we got word that it has.
The moratorium is over.
The zoning that we voted in the spring, the moratorium now is over.
Correct.
In Groton.
That is correct.
I saw a list that showed Groton had the moratorium in effect until December 2019.
That might have been before they realized that the zoning was passed at the Spring Town Meeting, and it was updated. But Becky's 100% correct in what she's saying. I thought that was interesting to show that the state is constantly changing the rules, and it's so hard to stay on top of all this stuff. It really is. So I'd look for a vote if the Board wants to vote to authorize the submission.
Under 5C, well, I understand what that means. I think that there could be some confusion without any additional explanation where it says the number of non-retail marijuana establishments shall not exceed three. And I think it needs a further explanation, because if this is approved and we were to allow under three a marijuana cultivator, a marijuana testing facility, and a marijuana research facility, that doesn't mean up to three of each. That means three total.
Correct.
It could be three cultivators, it could be one, one-on-one, it could be two-in-one. I think you need to get that a little clearer, at least in my opinion. I don't know if any of my fellow Board members feel that there could be some confusion over that.
It might be clearer if it said the total number.
Of all allowed uses.
I was just going to say that. So it would read the number of total non-retail marijuana establishments of all uses allowed under Section 3, D3, shall not exceed three. That's, I think that does.
That would really clear it up.
I'll submit that to the Planning Board as amended.
Are you okay with that?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good move.
I had read through this and thought there were some places that I thought needed some better punctuation, or maybe a little bit of language tweaking. But I think that when we pass this on to the Planning Board, they are the people who would know more about that.
I would leave that up to, I would leave that up to the Planning Board.
I guess I'm looking to you, John, would you agree with that?
I believe the Planning Board, once they get this, should go over it and.
Tweak it as they see.
Tweak it as they think needs to be tweaked. Particularly if things, other than how many establishments and what type, have changed since this was drafted several months ago.
Well, this was just drafted this week.
No, all that was changed in here is a small portion of this, but what this is, see, this is really changing, amending a bylaw that already.
The existing pass.
A portion of a bylaw that already exists, which makes it a little difficult to read. But they should look at the whole picture and make sure we've got everything covered.
I spoke to the Chairman of the Planning Board this afternoon, and a member of the Planning Board stopped by my office, and I told them that hopefully the Board tonight was going to submit it, and they understand what they need to do once they receive it. They know their statutory responsibility.
Jack, where's the microphone?
Can I ask what the, there are two questions I had. If you could go to the grid where it says N and PB, just could you explain that to me?
So the N means it's not permitted, and a PB is by special permit from the Planning Board.
Okay, thank you. And then if you could scroll back down to where you just were. So does this mean that the town will be asked to pass a bylaw that allows these three uses, marijuana cultivator, testing facility, and research facility? The bylaw, if approved, would allow those to, up to three of those in total, to be approved by special permit, is that correct?
Correct.
And if the bylaw, if a vote for the bylaw fails, what would the result be?
The zoning that we just passed in May.
Stays in place.
The existing bylaw stays in place. And if a resident wanted, was in favor of allowing no marijuana in town, how would they, no marijuana usage at all in town, how would they achieve that, given this option?
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, you move to amend the article to change all the PBs to ends. That does it.
So, so Town Meeting voters are going to be asked to either take these three, all, or nothing, those are the three options, or whatever amendment.
Yeah, there's an unlimited number of amendments that could.
You can't add in, you can't add in something that's not part of this.
Correct.
But you could amend any of these to preclude them, or limit it to one or two rather than the three as proposed.
Well, and as I recall, in May, the moderator allowed an amendment to increase the number. So that also could happen, presumably, yes. And the amendment did not pass, but it was proposed with a number of two or one or something.
There was a motion made.
There was an amendment made.
And it didn't pass.
It did not pass, but the town moderator allowed the amendment to change the number. Even to, and to change it up, yes.
And I apologize, but you may well have explained this the last meeting, but have you confirmed with Town Council that an amendment to strike all uses can be made, or any number of uses can be made?
Yep, and then any, anything that turns any of those PBs currently to ends will require a special election.
To endorse it.
Correct. It's a two-step process, you need two-thirds, plus you need a vote, a majority. So the plan is, is you go to Town Meeting on October 1st, which we'll talk about in a minute. On October 1st, if the Town Meeting, Special Town Meeting, if they pass this or a version of this that has any ends, we will have a Post-it Board, a Select Board meeting for Tuesday, October 2nd, at which time the Board will call for a special election on November 6th.
Thank you.
And if it doesn't pass, then you won't.
Can the microphone go over to Mr. Sarkin, please?
Just to follow up on that, please. So if you wanted to add Planning Board notifications to that grid, you would have to go through the same process.
Well, Planning Board right now, if you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get off that.
Special permit, I should say.
Yeah, but if you look at the current bylaw right now.
Yes.
Allows a Planning Board special permit in the industrial zones for all uses of marijuana, and it allows in. And it allows in the GB districts for retailer, testing, and marijuana research facilities. So right now, that's all allowed by planning board special permit. Anytime you change a PB to an N and you eliminate that need, that's a ban. That requires a two-step process. So this article will allow you to do that.
So you're saying right now, anywhere where it says PB.
Correct.
Anything can be allowed, not just the three designated.
Right now, it's all allowed.
No, but right now, there was a, there was a number that kept the number of them.
One.
To one for each of those.
No, for all, total.
One in total.
One in total.
It was one retail and one non-retail.
One.
No, one retail.
It was one retail and one non-retail. That's what we passed, this passed May.
I don't think so. If you look under here right now that's crossed out, that's what's allowed right now.
The number of non-retail shall not exceed one. And there was another place that said you could have one retail.
I see what you're saying. You're right. I'm sorry. I misspoke. You're right.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, what they said is that if a non-retail applied first, you still would have to allow one retail.
Correct.
But if a retail applied first, that would be it.
I don't think that was my understanding.
This, I, what you said, Judy, is what my understanding was. But Becky's reading of that bylaw is 100% correct, as it currently is constituted. You're 100% right, Becky.
So are there questions on what's being proposed currently that we're looking for approval or a vote to move this forward to the planning board?
I move that we move the revised bylaw as written to the planning board for their review and their public hearing process in preparation for October 1st special town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, it is that time of year for the board to consider calling the 2018 Fall Town Meeting. According to our bylaw, the Fall Town Meeting by default shall be held on the third Monday in October. If the select board determine, and this is taken from the bylaw, so I apologize for the board of selectmen, determine it is infeasible and desirable to hold the Fall Town Meeting on the third Monday, then on a year-to-year basis, they can establish a different date sometime during September, October, and November, at which time to hold the Fall Town Meeting. So as long as they provide formal public notice of that date at least six weeks prior to the date. Well, here we are on June 25th. That's more than six weeks from the date I'm proposing. If you jump ahead to page eight in your packets, you will see the proposed schedule. I'm asking the select board to call for the town meeting on October 1st. The warrant will open tonight. It will close on Thursday, August 2nd. The board will get the first draft of the articles on October 6th. On October 20th, the select board and the FINCOM will hold the public hearing.
Not October 6th.
I'm sorry, August 20th, rather. The select board and FINCOM will hold the public hearing on the articles. We'll post the warrant on September 14th, and the town meeting will be held on October 1st. I would ask the board to call for the Fall Town Meeting based on that schedule this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
I would also ask the board, in keeping with the decision tonight to forward the special amendment on the marijuana to the planning board, I would ask the board to call for a special town meeting. So I'm going to ask you to take two votes now. I would ask you to call for a special town meeting on October 1st, 2018 at 7:30 PM. The purpose of that special town meeting will be so that the meeting will dissolve that night, should the meeting be completed, because you really can't call for a special election if the warrant is still, if the meeting hasn't been dissolved. And so we would need to do a special town meeting within the Fall Town Meeting. There is a form requirement of 2% of the registered voters, which I believe is 162 people, that you will need to make sure we have a forum that night, which I'm sure we will. And so tonight, I'd ask you to call for the special town meeting on October 1st and then open the warrant and follow the same timeframe as the Fall Town Meeting schedule.
So...
You want two separate votes?
I want two separate votes.
Okay.
One, I want you to call for the special town meeting. And then, two, I want you to open and close the warrant.
I move that we call for a special town meeting on Monday, October 1st, 2018.
At 7:30 PM?
7:30 PM.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Is 7:30 the right time?
Yeah, because you're going to start the regular meeting at 7.
Oh, that's after the summit.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I would...
You want, you move that I...
You open the warrant and close it on...
Open the warrant for the October 1st, 2018 special town meeting.
And close it on August 2nd.
And close it on August 2nd. I have a question about that.
Is there a second?
Second.
So if we're going to close the warrant on August 2nd, and it looks to me like we're not, we decided not to meet on July 30th, right?
Yeah, so I fit this schedule to your summer meeting schedule.
So you...
I fit this schedule to your, to your summer meeting schedule.
But, so the warrant is going to close, but we were, are not meeting...
Correct.
A couple days before that.
You never do. You don't have to.
We don't need to be here.
Nope. So I'm going to give you the draft warrant on August 6th. That's when you are meeting.
When are we doing meeting?
And then I schedule the public hearing for two weeks after that on August 20th. This is a real condensed schedule because we're three weeks earlier than we normally are for the town meeting. That's why I move this up. I got to give Dawn and I enough time to do what we need to do. Town council enough time, the board enough time, and all that for an August 1st, October 1st meeting.
Do you have to do the public hearings on the 20th?
Well, you're not meeting the 13th or the 27th. So yes. That's why I picked that date.
Okay. So we have a motion to open the warrant for a special town meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then to close it on August 2nd. That could be part of the same motion.
Yeah, that was in the bottom line.
It was.
Excellent.
All ready?
I just want to make one quick appointment before we delve into item number six on the agenda with the town manager's report. I have one last appointment to make, and that is Matt Whalen to the Pro Shop staff at the country club. I made that appointment. I'd ask the select board to ratify that appointment this evening.
So moved.
Sent it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So item number six, you may not be aware of this, but the Town of Dunstable recently ended their relationship with their town administrator, and they're going through a transitional period and have reached out to me for assistance. Before embarking on a new administrator, they'd like me to assist them in evaluating their operations over the next couple of months and advise them on how best to proceed, including assistance with recruitment, et cetera. They believe this work would require 10 to 15 hours per week. My contract does not allow me to do any outside work without the express written consent of the select board. So I wanted to talk to the board about this tonight and have a discussion with you. There are a couple of considerations that I think the board needs to take into consideration. One, I'm a pretty busy guy. I have a lot going on, and there's a lot of work that this would entail. I'm not afraid of doing extra work, but I don't want it to impact my work here in, here in Groton. I don't want there to be a perception out there that I have all this extra free time, because I don't. But I think since the Town of Dunstable has reached out to us and we are a regional partner with them in the regional schools, and there are a lot of opportunities that we can, we can look for. One of the goals that the select board gave me this year was regionalization. So there are opportunities for that. So I wanted to have a dialogue with the board tonight to see if this is something that you think makes sense. If you don't, trust me, I never look for extra work. I have enough. You guys keep me very, very busy. But I do want to help Dunstable if I can. And I think, I think there's an opportunity here to meet with them and talk about it. Josh and I have been discussing this for 10 years, the potential, at least, right? As long as I've been here.
Well, we haven't been discussing. You become town administrator.
No, 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 no.
We've been discussing regionalization.
Regionalization opportunities. So there are, that's what I meant. So there are opportunities here. I'd like to be able to help out Dunstable in any way I can help them. They've been good partners to us. We've had a lot of conversations with them. I've worked with several of their select board members, selectmen over there. I guess they still call the selectmen over there, when they were on the advisory committee. So I do have relationships with some of them. I know their town accountant very, very well. You all do too. She's on our finance committee. So there are opportunities to do some work for them. What I was going to suggest tonight, if the board does think this makes sense to pursue further, I'd ask you to designate one of you to meet with me and their board to discuss it in more detail. But I want to hear from you on what your thoughts are. So that's how I'm laying it out.
All right. Questions, comments, thoughts, any questions? Okay.
I don't need to go first.
Okay.
So it's kind of vague, the time commitment. Could you talk a little bit more about what you thought?
Yeah, they thought 10 to 15 hours. I don't know if it's going to take that much work until I sit down with them and discuss a scope. This was something that one of the board members mentioned to me that they thought it would take. I don't know that, Becky. So I just put it out here. Until I sit down and talk to them, it could be less.
For how long?
They thought two or three months.
And was there any discussion of payment?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. Depends on how we do this. If I sign up with them and do it off my Town of Groton hours, I would be, I'd be an employer or contractor for the Town of Dunstable. They would pay me. If we decide that we're going to look at my current workload now and defer some of my workload for a couple of months, in which you ask me to say, put this off and squeeze Dunstable in to your, to your current schedule, then I would want them to reimburse the Town of Groton for my time. So it would be my hourly rate and they would reimburse the Town of Groton for my time. So it depends on what this board wants. And I will do whatever this board thinks is in the best interest of the taxpayers of Groton, because that's who I work for. The taxpayers of Groton. And that's my first and most important, my only duty.
Well, I am quite uneasy about finding a way to take 15 hours worth of work
I was just going to dump it on Dawn.
Off your...
I joke, I'm sorry.
Off your responsibility list for three months. I just think that seems kind of impossible and foolish. And I'm also quite uneasy about suggesting that you have 15 hours worth of free time and you should do it in your own time, because as a salaried employee, actually, I know that you work and you're available to us a lot, and...
I work a lot of nights and weekends.
I'm not in favor of promoting the kinds of overwork that leads to huge stresses in individuals and families.
I appreciate that and appreciate you saying that.
Other comments, concerns, thoughts, questions?
Mark had alluded to the fact that we've discussed the regionalization potential for some of the services that Groton provides to its citizens and maybe reaching out and regionalizing some of those services, whether it be DPW, police, fire, EMS, town hall services from assessing to every other function that a town hall serves, as well as administrative functions. After all, we can certainly share a school district. And I think that if we craft this correctly, we could be able to do two things. One, assist our neighbor. Two, make sure with the proper, again, billing etiquette in place, that we're reimbursed not just for Mark's time, but maybe at a slight premium. And we can't tell an employee how to use their vacation time or personal days and what to do. But typically, the summer is the slowest time for the select board, town manager's office, because we're not in budget season. And to be able to have the opportunity to have a very large lens, broadcast on all aspects of Dunstable's town government, from capital to regular budget to operations across the board, certainly would lend opportunities to this town in the course of discussions about any potential regionalization opportunities. So not only could this work out in favor for Dunstable, it could work out in favor for Groton. And Becky does bring up a very good point in terms of burnout and the amount of time that's required in order to do this. And that is a concern to me and for...
And me.
And for you, and obviously for everyone who's a taxpayer in the Town of Groton, to think that if Mark was able to lend 10 or 15 hours per week to the Town of Dunstable, that that doesn't mean that Mark has extra time. Certainly, Mark and I have meetings at 6:00 AM. As a matter of fact, tomorrow morning, we have a meeting at what time, Mark?
5:45 AM.
5:45 AM, we have a meeting, scheduled meeting.
Yep.
A public meeting, but a scheduled meeting. And...
Bringing the coffee?
Yeah, sure. Well, who's, no, no Dunkin' Donuts is open yet in Groton.
Oh, so that will...
At any rate, we have to get those permits at 5:00 AM. But, no, sorry, all joking aside, I think this is a unique opportunity. And I certainly have spoken to one member of the board of selectmen up in Dunstable about this. And according to him, they are unanimously in support of doing this, and can't see why they wouldn't be. We just need to make sure that if we do this, that it's done fair and equitably to the taxpayers and that it doesn't cause Mark any undue stress above and beyond the stress level he's already accustomed to.
So how would you propose to do that? I mean, you just said.
Okay. Well, again, you can't tell an employee how to use their vacation time, okay? So without even discussing that any further, I think that we could allocate a portion of Mark's salary to a billable rate. So we know what Mark gets paid under contract, and it's approximately $140,000 this year. So if you took $140,000, divided it by 52, and then divided it by 40, even though Mark works much more, that would be what Mark's billable rate would be. And then on top of that, for administrative purposes, we'd have to work out something that would be fair and equitable to Groton for losing him for a period of time. But we certainly would have to be reimbursed by the Town of Dunstable for the cost of his hourly rate. That's how I think it would work.
But the losing his work on our behalf for a period of time, are you just thinking we could absorb that?
Well, having gone through 12 summer cycles, when is the select board's office in your office the slowest in the course of the year?
Well, it is slow. It is slow during the summertime. So we do special projects that the board assigns to us. For example, this summer, we'll be working with the contractor on the, one of the updates I'm going to give you tonight is we have the kickoff on the senior center project tonight. So that's one of the projects that we're doing. But, you know, it's a time that people take vacation. I take vacation in the summertime. And I've given a lot of thought about maybe a day a week I take to vacation from Groton. I have vacation time that I could take a day off a week so that the taxpayers are not affected by this. And it's up to me to figure out how I do that and make sure my wife doesn't divorce and shoot me. And then we can figure it out from there. But I think what I would like to start out, before we start thinking about how many hours this is going to be, allow me and one member of this board to join me in sitting down with the select board and the selectmen in Dunstable and talk about scope. We may find out that it's too much for me to handle. We may find out that, well, wait a minute, it's five hours a week. It's not that big a deal. And I could put in five extra hours a week on my own time to accomplish that. So I think before we make assumptions, I would really like the opportunity to have one of you join me. I'd suggest Josh, and Josh has had those conversations.
I would suggest that there might be a perceived bias, because I've been advocating for this for 10 years.
Well, good point.
And with that said, I would like it to be another member.
Understood, understood.
Only because there's a...
Yep, no, I, Josh, I agree with you 100%.
Can I talk to me?
Yeah, I do want to hear from John.
I do, too. I hear 15 hours, but that's somebody's estimate. We don't know what they're thinking. They may have in mind doing a number of things that would take well more than 15 hours. And so before we went very much further, I'd like to see a statement of work come together that we can look at. And then you can give some thought to, does this, based on what they've written down, are the deliverables that you're going to provide something you would consider doing with your vacation time? Something, I mean, if it's really small, maybe? So I don't, I don't want to make a firm decision until I understand better what it is they want you to do.
I agree. That's why I want to have one of you join you.
And we've got some good corral around how long that's going to take.
I can't think of a better select board candidate than you, Mr. Geier, to accompany him personally.
Are you willing or interested?
I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
Then you can get the answers that you're looking for and share them with us.
So I have another...
Because I share your concerns.
I have another...
As do I.
Concern here. You're seeing this as an opportunity to explore regionalization possibilities. I'm not at all sure that that's what Dunstable is seeing this as. And I think... And I think in in what further conversations, which I think should be should happen. I mean, I don't think we have enough information to say yes or no at this point. But I think that should be really clear, because it could backfire quite badly, I think, to the dynamic of of us being the larger partner in Groton Dunstable has always had, you know, and need to be careful about how we interact with each other and to say that, you know, we're doing this to help Dunstable. But in fact, if it is perceived that we're doing this to figure out ways to benefit ourselves that Dunstable might not have thought of, that might not actually end up going over real well. If if there's a wish on both parties to explore regionalization, it might ultimately be better for both towns to have had a consultant from the MMA or from some neutral third party initiate that. So it isn't seen as us trying to kind of come in and do something with Dunstable that they didn't want to happen in the first place.
You know, somewhat jokingly, in the past, you've talked about the town of Runstable. And up in Dunstable, they've talked about the town of Dunroton. And needless to say, that certainly is not what is on the table right now. What's on the table right now is an interim position to help fill a void in their not town manager position, but what do they call it?
Town administrator.
Town administrator.
Town administrator position. And having spoken again to one member of their selectment board, selectmen, that according to him, they are unanimously in support of this. And the discussion about looking at regionalization certainly has occurred, but the purpose of this isn't for that. So when I said shine a lens on that, that doesn't mean at the detriment of the town of Dunstable or to the advantage of the town of Groton. It means a partnership situation. So during the course of the discussion that John and Mark would have with the Dunstable selectmen, I think it should be made abundantly clear that if you are to enter into an agreement to have Mark serve as the town administrator on an interim basis, would it also include a look at regionalization? Or is that something that is off the table at this juncture and something to be saved for a later date? Because right now, they're looking for an interim administrator.
I was just trying to come up with with how this would be advantageous to Groton. I was just trying to come up with ideas. I was not implying that that's what they want and that's what we want. But it would be part of, I think, a review that could be beneficial to both communities.
If if they had come forward and said they'd like to have you participate as a in a screening committee for a new administrator or something like that, that's pretty well defined. And we we get help from other police chiefs and and we help other police chiefs when we're looking for candidates.
I've helped on the towns and searches.
And and so that would be a different kind of 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 value added assistance which we could probably do as as good friends, because it isn't going to be it's a few hours, not not a few weeks or something like that.
Or three months.
It's so open ended, it's so open ended at this point that I I just don't have a good feel for
That's where we need to talk about it.
Right, I mean, it's it sounds like there are a number of questions and concerns that we all share. We clearly all need more information. I would entertain a motion, I guess formally, to ask Mr. Geiger to work with Mark in the select board over in Dunstable to just kind of scope out the duration, the tasks, the timeframes, and and get us more information. I think it, yeah, talk about money. Um, sounds good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous.
So I'd like to go through the, as we do.
So just before we leave that, so there would be this meeting and then it would have to come back for us.
Oh, I can't do anything without this board approving it.
And we're not meeting for two more weeks now.
Yep, I'll give John and I time to set up. You get the Fourth of July coming up, and I know that's a vacation timeframe. But I'll reach out to Dunstable tomorrow and find out their availability to meet with us. So I'd like to go through the ongoing issues. Listen, I have a couple of updates, but I'll
Before we do that, is there any other business?
Oh, sorry.
Don't see any, but okay onward.
Yeah, probably should have covered this under announcements, if you bear with me. The farmer's market, Groton Farmer's Market, will begin right after the Fourth of July, I believe, on Friday, July sixth. So please do check the website to confirm that my date is correct. But it's bigger, it's better, it's delicious.
So on ongoing issues, A, under the police chief's search, we're going to have a executive session tonight to continue that discussion. Anything on B? C?
A page, just the list comes up.
D? E? F? Oh, sorry.
Where are we at?
I'm up to F.
G.
G, I'm hoping to incorporate some of that into the other policy that comes up later here.
Well, I actually have begun this.
Good.
And I would hope that I will have a deliverable for you at the meeting right after July fourth. So I think that's what, July ninth, evening? So I will get back to you next week, but certainly if the chair is so inclined to put that on for discussion on July ninth, I think that
So are we talking about G?
We're talking about, I was tasked with reviewing
You're thinking you're up to, you're up to L, Becky, that I was going to talk about that when we get to that.
So
G is major initiative planning. Jack started this.
Yeah, I know. I don't think you heard what I had just said before you started talking.
Apparently not.
I had thought that that could be, aspects of that could be incorporated into the one that's
L.
L.
Well, why don't you, okay, I have a suggestion.
So maybe, yeah.
Provide you with the with with, provide me what you have, and I'll work with Becky, because Becky and I are working on L. Maybe we can incorporate what you have on on the major initiative planning. And Becky and I can try to incorporate it when her and I are working on it.
Do you have any devices that can convert pages into Word documents?
Do what?
We can try and figure it out.
What what kind of pages are they? Are they PDF files?
Pages is what Apple uses as opposed to Word. And an iPad writes documents.
Well, I got to believe that they can, those documents can be converted to PDFs.
I think we should be able to do that. I'm sure.
If you can convert it to a PDF.
I'm sure I can convert it to a PDF.
Then she can convert it to Word. Okay.
So right now, I'll send you what I, I'll send you what I have.
Perfect.
Probably only a third right now.
But let me point out, E, that when you get together and look at all this stuff, you're either going to decide there's some symbolism by bringing them together into one, or you're going to decide, no, that this isn't is
Yeah, maybe it belongs as two separate.
These are two really separate things, and we need to keep them that way.
I'd love to just finish it, present it, and then let the board decide if it should be merged. No?
Well, uh
I think it's separate personally.
Well, we really redrafted the whole
You haven't seen the building.
Yeah, it's 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 now a little called the building, it's now capital planning. Becky, Gary and I had a meeting, we've, and I made some changes, Becky's making some changes. I'd like to see what you have and see if we can do that before we put it on the agenda for the board, so there's no, if it's all right with you.
That's fine.
So may, but maybe we can aim to have them both ready for that next meeting, so that we
I don't see a reason why we couldn't.
Then we can figure it out.
Well, hopefully the output of it is a recommendation to the board, thinking to merge these things together or to keep them separate.
Correct. Correct.
And then we're making forward progress.
Excellent. All right, so Josh, I'll wait to get something from you, okay? Under H, senior center building committee project. I want to talk about that. We had the kickoff meeting today. We had the architect here, the clerk of the works, we had the project manager, we had the contractor here. We had members of the building committee here, council agent, director, myself, Dawn. We had a really good meeting. We are going to issue the notice to proceed on July ninth. That's when the project will get started. That's when the contractor will receive a letter from me saying, start the project. We are right now working on the demolition piece, on who's going to take care of the asbestos in the foundation. We're working that out. We're filing the proper paperwork with DEP. And, excuse me, depending on cost and where it makes the most sense economically for the town, that's where we're going to do it. So that's part of the process. But the contractor, you know, great people, they seem eager, they seem to know everything they need to know. Greg is running this, and Dawn will tell you with an iron fist. And I got to tell you, there's going to be no messing around on this project with Greg Yanchenko in charge of the project. He's awesome. You should see him today. Between him and Bob Goss, I I feel really good about this project.
And the contractor understands the timeline and is ready to go on July ninth?
Absolutely, and he knows he has three hundred and sixty-five days to complete the project. So we're we're geared up and excited and we're ready to go. So I'm very happy to report that to the board.
Just just be sure and define those as calendar days.
Yes. Absolutely. Anybody have anything on I? J?
Do you have anything on J, or we're waiting here?
It's it's before the legislature. We're just waiting for the hearing and we're waiting for the, to get to the governor's desk.
When did they recess?
Hopefully, this is going to be fast tracked before their recess, which is sometime in July. So Mike Mike Bouchard is all over this. K? L, we just talked about. M? N, we talked about.
Like, can we go back to M?
Yep.
This has nothing to do, I'm sorry, with one nineteen sidewalk, but it's worth comment that the sidewalk installation that's being paid for by the Groton School
Underway.
on Farmer's Row is well underway.
Actually looks good.
It's great to see it. I've been watching it very closely. And I think it's going to be a great asset to both Groton School and the town of Groton.
Absolutely, I agree a hundred percent. Anything on O?
I would like to go back to K for a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Is there a town hall employee that's working on identifying what the options are to consider for how to account for the
Yes, me.
occupancy tax?
Me.
Okay, so I think if something could be prepared that identifies what the options are to be considered, we can get something started
Okay.
on on that.
Absolutely.
It may not, I don't know how important it is that this get done really fast, but I would think we'd want to know about this as we go into the budget season of what we're going to do here.
I agree.
So that's just a request.
You can think about it on your ride to Dunstable every Friday.
Cue.
Sorry.
R, I have an update on R. The fire department task force study committee held their first meeting this afternoon. Peter Mayette, Peter Mayette was elected chair. Auntie Foley is vice chair, and Jennifer Evans was awesome and stepped up and said she'll do the minutes, which they were fighting over who wasn't going to do the minutes, which was actually kind of funny. But Jennifer's the clerk, and she's going to do, she's going to do the minutes, and I'm sure they'll be very detailed and and well done. The first thing we talked about, we reviewed the charge, and and the one thing I said to them was that when the board had originally started thinking about this task force, they were thinking about it right after town meeting, and they were going to try to come back to the fall for a proposal. Given the fact that they didn't start until till now, June twenty-fifth, and the fact that the town meeting has moved up to October first, the first thing I recommended to them is to get rid of the deadline and beat at their pace and their their leisure and decide when they want to come back with a proposal to the select board, and they were all in agreement with that. The one thing that I said to them that they may want to consider, but it's totally their call, and and they understand their independence on all of this, and that Steele and I are resources to them. And Steele and I both made it very clear to them that we weren't going to make any recommendations to them. We're just going to give them the information that they wanted to make their decision. I did say that it would be nice if they could, if they wanted to, fit it into the budget process for next year if they felt it was something that they could do in November. But if they can't meet that deadline, that's fine, that's their call. So they're off and running, they've decided to meet weekly. They set their meeting schedule for Mondays at six o'clock. They feel, and I I agree with them, that a lot of their work is going to be done outside of the meeting, doing their research. One of the first things that they're going to do is study the strategic planning document that the fire department undertook. They also want to look at calls, runtimes, and things like that. Steele's putting all that information together for them. So they asked a lot of really good questions today, and they're they're running to go. So it's a really, really good committee, so I'm, I think the board did a good job appointing them, and I'm looking forward to working with them over the next several months or years.
Is that strategic report on the website somewhere?
It is on the fire department study department, the fire department task force study committee page. So yes.
Any chance you could forward us that?
Yeah.
Document, I haven't haven't read it yet.
Okay. Dawn, can we, yeah, I'll do that.
I think it was, I think it was last summer that they came.
We have the final, the final report is is was was finished in December. So it's dated September for some reason on the report, but that's the, when I send that to you, that's the report.
Okay, great. Yeah, John?
As I read the editorial in last week's Groton Herald.
There was an editorial?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There was, and it occurred to me that we maybe need to look harder at how we can communicate to the community exactly where we're going with this effort. Because it was in, it was least insinuated in there that that we were headed to ask for money at the fall town meeting. And if that's somebody's goal, I didn't mind.
It's not this task force one either.
We can think about, you know, how we want to help help the public understand where we're where we're going and how we plan to get there, as opposed to making assumptions about that.
Agreed. Did you have any other questions, Ed?
No, I mean, John, you're you're absolutely on point. And I think that the board was handed a very large pill last December thirty-first. And that was going to be very difficult to swallow, even with a horse trough of water. And that in order to alleviate the concerns of moving forward with the proposals from both the police department and the fire department, we suggested that these task forces be formed, and now they are formed.
But what?
One, one is, right.
One is formed, and once we get another police chief in place.
Give them a little time to get oriented.
Give them a little time to get oriented, that there shall be either a change in the charge of this current task force to include the study of the police department request and or a additional task force appointed for the study of that. But the point being is, we are taking the slow, methodical approach in terms of proving the need for the requests of both departments. And that whatever the press can do to convey that, I think is important, because opining in an editorial about what may or may not happen certainly is not in the best interest, because a lot of people get their news from the editorial as opposed to watching this meeting or these meetings. And I know how boring they can be. However, not that I'm doing. But but the point being is that this is being studied, and whatever the recommendations are that are presented are being done in a well orchestrated fashion.
One of the things I want, and Connie, this is this is an important point. One of the things I said to the committee, the fire chief and I said to the committee tonight, was that we're not talking about whether or not we need a full-time department or whether or not we need additional call firefighters. What we want them to look at is determine the level of service that this community needs and deserves and wants, and then how to attain that level of service. That's how we crafted this to them tonight, and that's what they're looking to do. And I think that's a very important clarification and and statement that I think everybody needs to understand. There's no preconceived anything going into this. It's what level of service, they could decide right now that the level of service we have is great, we don't need to do anything. Or they could determine, wait a minute, we don't like this level of service, we want this level of service. To achieve it, we need to do this. I'm sorry, John.
No, no, I just, I would like to see us come up with some alternatives that we can present to the town. This is the services you get, this is how much it costs, and let them tell us
Correct.
what they want us to do.
That's a little bit challenging to do to the whole town in a way that you get actual feedback. But certainly, we need to see alternatives and and, you know, to be fair, I think that we should have addressed that August thirty-first finish date on the charge to the committee earlier. I think that was the main thrust of that editorial was that that was an unrealistic date. And, you know, until this public meeting where we just said, we understand that that's unrealistic, take the time we need, that was what was in writing, and that was what they were reacting to. So another time, we would, you know, just careful, we need to be careful about what does go out to the public, because ultimately, we want people to understand what we're doing, not get the wrong idea.
Judy? I think the other thing that Steele said was that he is not looking for a full-time department. There's no way that he would be able to achieve that without hiring many, many There's no way that he would be able to achieve that without hiring many, many.
Way more than five.
That's right. This, this is not looking for a full-time department.
It's providing full-time coverage twenty-four seven, minimum full-time coverage twenty-four seven is what the original proposal was. A full-time department would require four on every shift, that would require us to hire twenty full-time firefighters, nobody's talking about that.
Somehow it got interpreted as.
Yeah.
Twenty-four by seven and it, and so that.
It's twenty-four by seven.
The most three years is going to be, um, around the clock.
Yep.
Seven days a week.
You'd have the station staff with at least two firefighters twenty-four seven, seven days a week, yeah.
So these are the options, these combinations of things are the options that I'm hoping that this committee is going to consider and, and look at them.
Two, two of the members came in very well thought-out, um, processes that they wanted to follow tonight, so it was a good meeting, it was a very good meeting. That's all, oh, um.
Can we go back to P, building fee waivers?
Yep.
And I guess I'm not clear what that means or why it's on this list.
We can discuss it.
The, 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 the purpose of that was to determine in the future how the board addresses any fee waivers. Is there going to be an established policy and process in which the board would even consider doing that?
Or such as, um, some of the things that we considered in the Indian Hill process.
Correct.
That maybe we would like to put something in place for the future, should there be.
Formalized. Correct. That's what that's on there for.
Okay.
There's no rush on that.
Is there anybody who is going to kind of move that forward or are we just going to keep it?
Right now.
Ah, okay.
Uh, I'd like to propose that any building fee waivers subject to a public hearing conducted by the board of select. Simple as that.
Well, uh, but I, I think that there's another possibility that we as a board might want to discuss, um, taking a slightly more comprehensive view, uh, are there ways that we would like to acknowledge that a project over a certain size gets into a different category? And then also incorporate your suggestion.
Listen, there's a postmortem for the situation that occurred with Indian Hill. I think it would hold the board, the public and everybody that's interested that if it is prescribed in writing as to what the cost will be, then that's what the cost will be. And if somebody wants to make an argument for a reduction in a fee, whether it's for a shed or whether it's for a music school, then they need to come during a public hearing and present their case and in the light of public. That's what I learned from that whole thing, and I think that to do anything other than that, um, then we didn't learn our lesson.
I, I'm not disputing that, I'm saying that there might also be another component in addition to that of, of structuring our fee schedule that for a nonprofit organization, uh, a project over such and such a threshold would get automatically a slight reduction. I think that's something that we could consider.
I, I mean, to me, I think that the, the hearing idea clearly is what we learned or what we should have learned from this.
Right.
Situation. Um, and I think that would end up being a component of, of some sort of process, policy, procedure, but I think we need something written to, to consider that would include all of these different things. Um, and, and part of this, to me at least, is what, what is our process with, with incomplete building permit applications? So that if we get one that is missing a value or something like that, what do we, how do we handle that?
Send it back.
John?
Um, I don't want to see the board be, start spending nights and nights arguing with people about fee changes. Um, I would very much like to see something that has only a rare exception that it's going to wind up on, on this table. And, um, um, the other thing that occurs to me that I'd like to see in anything we draw up is if you can't give us a responsible estimate of the cost of your project. We can't give you a building permit, period. Uh, so I think there are some things that we, we really want to kick around. And the sooner we get started on it, the less apt we are to have, uh, something come up from us.
Right.
From around the corner and, and, uh, bang us on the head.
Could we instruct or ask the town manager to instruct the building department to take a look at what other communities do with nonprofits and other things in terms of waivers and how they handle incomplete, I mean, obviously, I think John hit on that.
I think that's a great idea.
First of all, see what they do for nonprofits.
We already know that, I mean, they already got us that information, so it's already, already a bit.
And then. Well, well. Let's get it again, let's schedule it as an agenda while I'm moving forward, but John, you're right on point. Bottom line is an incomplete application without a value on it should be sent back and no permit should be issued until such time where it has one. I mean, why can't we just establish that and insert that regulation in?
Yeah, well, what. I believe it's in there, but maybe what you're saying is we would like to see the language that exists about that, Mark?
Yep.
It'd be good to get that as all.
And see if there's a way to strengthen that or if it needs to be changed.
Cause it's only a matter of time before somebody comes before us again asking for a fee reduction based on what occurred.
Yep.
And there's some language in the charter when we ever get it.
It says.
That, that talks about fee waivers and, and what the prerequisites are for, um.
That's true.
Making those waivers.
Right.
So we'll want to incorporate that into.
Yeah.
It's not a lot, but.
So can we have that on the agenda in a, you know?
Yeah, what I was, what I've.
Month or two out of.
What I was thinking about doing is it's always nice for the board to have something in front of them to pick apart and raggle me about.
Exactly, yeah.
So what I'll do is I'll try to come up with a draft, working with all of you independently, um, and then have that sometime in July or August for you to look at. I, I, I think I agree with exactly what Josh said, very simple, but there are some caveats that have to be added to that, so. I'll, it's on my list of things to do, I'll, I'll think about that when I'm driving to Dunstable as well. Um, if I'm driving to Dunstable.
Do you have a quick mention?
The last, the last.
Or maybe when you're on vacation, you might think about that.
If you're on vacation.
Wait, wait, wait a second, repeat. So I realize that you'll probably go into depth on this later, but I wanted to, in, in case I'm not here to, uh, make my, a suggestion, that is that I think it'd be useful to recognize that fees are part of town revenue, just like, uh, property taxes are. And when fees are reduced, unless costs are also reduced by the same amount, then the beneficiary of the reduced fee is effectively being subsidized at the expense of taxpayers. And so I would ask that your policy reflect the recognition that when fees are reduced, taxpayers are effectively making up that and have a process for allowing taxpayers to not just hear about, but to vote on your, um, on a reduction. For instance, when we went to sell Prescott, we offered a TIF and taxpayers had an opportunity to vote as to whether or not they wanted to accept the proposal of foregoing taxes in deference to the perceived benefit of selling of, um, the, the Prescott deal. So anyway, um, giving away a half million dollars for what's just say in, in building permit fees is something that taxpayers should be more than just notified about, they should be able to vote, vote on, thanks.
I, I, I'm sorry, I completely disagree comparing building permit fees to property tax revenue. It is not in the same ballpark, it is not the same thing, it, it is not a loss to the taxpayers. If somebody doesn't build a house, we don't get that revenue, okay? So if they don't build a building permit and they don't come in to build a house, we're not going to get revenue a, at all. So you can't compare something that's guaranteed property tax revenue to building permit fees, it's a specious argument and it, and it's, it's ridiculous to make that argument, so I just have to be clear on that.
We'll take that all into account when we discuss this down the line.
Um, then the final thing I have to say is S, uh, union negotiations. I have, um, I will have an executive session I'm going to ask the board to go into on, uh, July ninth. I'll have an update on a bunch of union contracts for you, um, at that time, um, which leads me to a question. I sent out an email to the board over the weekend, uh, since the fireworks are going to be on the ninth and that is our meeting and we've already talked to the planning board and we've already advertised, I believe that we're going to be making an appointment that night. We need to meet on the ninth, um, for that, and by the way, we have two applicants that have come forward, I think I've notified the board and the planning board of those two applicants.
Oh, you haven't.
You, check your email, I, I know I have.
You have.
Since we, since we came to this meeting.
Since you came here, yeah, since you came here. Um, so, the, um, I would like to meet on the ninth, but I would like to start early so you're riding here before the fireworks start. Unless we generate them in this meeting. Bad, bad joke.
No, we're not going to do that.
So.
So how early?
I had suggested five thirty to start, Becky suggested five, I'm good either way. So it's five thirty already, if we start at five thirty?
No.
Five thirty isn't good?
No.
What is the earliest, Josh, realistically, you can do this?
What else is on the agenda?
Well, you're going to be, there's going to be executive sessions.
I, I need you traveling going out for work.
Understood.
Okay.
Then I'm going to be, if you're a distance away, at least an hour and a half to two hours away.
Can you, Jordan's on the phone perhaps, or, you wanted to start with the executive session?
Well, I was, I wanted to start with the executive sessions and then meet with the, meet with the planning board and schedule them for six o'clock. Um, so, I would, it's up to the board, if you want to meet at seven, we meet at regular time.
No, 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 I'm fine on the phone.
Okay.
I may walk in.
Okay.
Yeah, I indicated to Mark that whatever the, the board wanted to go with, I'd make work.
Okay. Yeah.
All right.
I just feel like we shoot ourselves in the foot if we.
Oh, is it executive session?
The, well, he said he wanted to start.
I want to start executive session, so you can participate by phone.
I'm with somebody in my vehicle.
Oh, then you can't, you can't participate.
But.
Remotely.
I can for the regular meeting.
Yeah, but I was going to do the executive session before the start of the meeting. Um, let me, let me figure it out.
Could we do it in the other order?
I could be here by six, can we delay the executive session till after six o'clock and then just start with the regular session portion in joint meeting?
If the planning board can be here at five thirty, we can definitely do that.
I don't see why we can't do that.
Four, five.
Yeah, and why don't you see what options there are, we can do scheduling offline.
Okay, so what's the options are, and I can always ask, uh, my employer to be in one of the other vehicles and make them sit three together or I'll sit by myself.
Okay.
That'll go over real well.
We'll buy them coffee, so.
Well, you'll be able to fire up that cigar, see?
Exactly.
That would happen regardless.
Um, all right, so I'll get back to you, so we have liaison reports, minutes, and then I'd ask the board to enter executive session.
Okay, wait a second, the fireworks start at nine, the actual, the ignition of.
Ignition.
Entertainment starts at nine, but.
The, the ignition of that, the, the cooking by the fire department, the, the most, pretty.
Josh said six.
Firework starts at six.
Okay. So it sounds like we're, we're in the midst of this, stay tuned, our meeting may be earlier, it may not be earlier. We'll let everyone know.
Cause it seems to me there was a fair amount of other stuff on the agenda.
I believe so.
And, um, to try to squeeze in when we're not, you know, there's a gap before that meeting and a gap after that meeting also.
Okay, I'll get back to all of you.
Are there any liaison reports? All right, moving on, we have one set of minutes to review, June eleventh.
I move we approve the minutes of June eleventh, twenty eighteen.
Start second.
Second.
Any concerns, questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
I'd ask the board to enter executive session pursuant to Massano Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, Paragraph two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the purpose would be police chief negotiations.
And not.
With no intention to.
And not return to open the.
Return session, session.
So moved.
Start second, second, Greg, entry to executive session, there will be a call though, John?
Hold with your name.
Geiger, yes.
Fine, aye, who do you get aye?
Geiger, aye.
Very good, then our regular meeting is adjourned and we will go into executive session.